No matter life or mission.
Hey you.
Well, you know, the other thing I thought, maybe some of the younger kids would like, yeah. They have a part for them.
But we're looking into it.
Okay. Okay. Good, good. Nah, nah. Oh, you know what? Can we go up there? It's good to show up there. Hi, can we come up there?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
No. It's on the one of your slot. Well, I'd probably go back and check mine. I'd probably have those too.
Okay, we're a little bit late, so let's go ahead and get started. I know that's a different voice than you normally hear, and we just want to excuse the Mayor Pike today and Councilwoman Betty Ariel. They're both in Salt Lake today. So you get that pleasure of listening to me tonight for this council meeting as I'll be serving as Mayor Pro Tem this evening. So welcome to everyone to our meeting tonight. We're going to get it started right with an invocation from the one and only Jimmy Keston, after which we have a real treat again after that, which is the Chief. He's going to lead us into Pledge of Allegiance. Appreciate him for doing that. Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and Council. It's a privilege to be with you again, and especially in this month where we celebrate the anniversary of the city of St. George and the incredible place that we have, that we get to share as a place to live. Let's pray. Gracious Heavenly Father, as we have begun this new year and set out to achieve the goals you've laid before us, we thank you for all that you have done in this community to bring us to the point we're at. We're thank you for all, we are thankful for all of those who have given of themselves in service to this community. And a special blessing upon our city manager coming up on his retirement for the amazing work that he has done watching this city grow over the last forty years. And we are thankful for all of his efforts and ask for a real blessing upon his life in this next season that he heads to. We're thankful for all that you have done in this community. You're thankful for all you will do. Bless the work of this council today and all those who come before it. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Would the audience please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Jimmy. Jimmy's sneaking out and he wanted to make sure that we all knew it wasn't because he didn't like us. He has other civic duties today, so we appreciate that. So, thank you, Jimmy, and thank you, Chief. Okay, so before we get started on our regular agenda, two things. First, as I was, as the mayor called me and asked me to take over the meeting today and to guide us through our agenda, I thought how awesome it is that the form of government we have, that just a regular old guy like me and some regular old people like this, only I'd call them extraordinary people, get to come up here and with your input and others who have given us input before, have the ability to guide our own destiny in our city. So it just struck me today as I realized that, you know, I kind of had to take a deep breath because the mayor's never not here, so I don't get to do this very often. So anyways, with that being said, we have a couple of representatives from the Daughters of the Utah Pioneers here that are going to come up and tell us about what they have going on. Janine Vanderbruggen, did I get that right? Pretty close. And Ruth Snar. Now Ruth's just for moral support, right? So, but if you'd come up and just take over the microphone.
I just want you to know how thankful I am that you give me a couple of minutes because I read your agenda and I know how much you have to do today, so thank you for this time. And you did a great job with my name. It's really a hard name for St. George. I am the president of the Board of Directors for the Daughters of Utah Pioneers Museum that's right around the corner here. And as was mentioned before the invocation, the invocation that we are celebrating this week, the 156th anniversary of the charter of the city of St. George, which is just an awesome thing. And in supporting that and remembering that celebration, we have set up a program for Saturday from ten to twelve where Betty Ariel, who's not here, I guess she heard I was coming, I don't know. Anyway, Betty's going to be our guest speaker, talking about the history of Dixie and some of her thoughts and reminisces about the area. And it's just going to be a great time for people to learn a little more about the history. Also, the museum is going to have a lot of different photos and relics highlighted about the first things that took place. Can you think about how it was then to come here? And now we have this beautiful, beautiful community. But we have to be reminded of what of our early pioneers had to go through in order to settle this area. So what I came to do today is to extend a personal invitation to each of you to come to our event and to listen to Betty, give her some support too. We're also, after that, we're going to have an open house because we've made lots of changes inside our museum. So if you haven't been there for a while, you might want to come. And if you have any family in there, come and get reunited with them. Also, you might want to just come any day and browse because you can't see it all in a short time. Bring your family, bring your neighbors and friends. And again, remember what those early pioneers had to go through in order that we can have this marvelous, marvelous community now. So I thank you very much for allowing me this time, and I hope to see you on Saturday. We do have some flyers out for anybody that is here. Please come and learn a little more about the history of this area. Thank you.
Perfect, great activity. Also, after you do that, we're going to have some root beer floats, like we normally do to celebrate the birthday.
Twelve to two.
Twelve to two at the Social Hall, which is just to the, just north of the Opera House. You guys are all going to be there. And does anybody have any questions for Janine? Thank you for what you do. It is, it is awesome to be able to reconnect with our history and it really gives you a new appreciation for what we have here. And I always say I appreciate air conditioning when it gets summertime, and I don't know how those pioneers lived here without air conditioning, but they did. So.
Mark has, do you have something, Mark?
Raising his hand.
Mayor Pro Tem, if you don't mind, I wouldn't, I need to tell everyone, you know, what's going on over at the Social Hall. You mentioned root beer floats.
Perfect.
In addition to that activity from noon to two, we'll also have live music and other things going on there. The, there will be free admission to the St. George Art Museum that day. And it's a perfect opportunity to stroll through the Daughters of the Utah Pioneer Museum as well as our own St. George Art Museum. There will also be free rides on the Suntran bus service all day Saturday. There will be a free open swim at the Sand Hollow Aquatic Center for anyone interested in that, and we usually see large crowds for that activity, as well as free entry into the St. George Recreation Center. Lots of activities going on there throughout the day. So we hope it's a, it's a day of activity. Obviously, activity and optimism are two key words for St. George. And I think Saturday will be chuck full of those types of things. And so we're excited to host the 156th birthday of our city.
Just a question. Now, I'm not a real ice cream fan. I can make a great float. But isn't there also cookies for guys like me?
There are a lot of, there are plenty of cookies. In fact, we usually have a few left over, so we would encourage people to.
We're going to put a limit on how many one city council person can eat.
I was going to say skip the one cookie limit, but in your case, Joe, we may keep you to that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for keeping us on track. What, a great day, lots of stuff going on. You can go see the Daughters of Utah Pioneers and listen to Betty, have root beer floats, cookies, go swimming. Be a good day. So, thank you, Mark. Okay, if there's nothing else. Oh, yeah, welcome to the scouts that came in. Luckily, you came in a little later. We'd have put you to work. So feel free to stay as long as you'd like and keep track of how much money we spend tonight, okay? All right, thank you. Welcome. Okay, Gary, let's see, what do we got?
Well, first of all, I'm a little bit disappointed, Mayor Pro Tem, that you did not make some comment about 156th birthday of the city, that I have seen all of them. Because normally, normally that's what you say about how long I've been here in this position, but so. Were you trying to be nice tonight for a change?
I've turned over a new leaf. I'm trying to be nice for a change.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're not here much longer, so we have to be nice.
Usually, usually says that he wasn't born when I started here, and so that makes me feel real good too.
I had it on my notes here, but I skipped over it.
Well, thank you for that, so.
Thanks, Gary.
All right, well, we'll go to the agenda then with bid openings. This is an award of a professional services agreement with Bowen Collins and Associates. Talk about for the scouts how much money we're spending. This involves the design and construction management for the major wastewater treatment plant expansion and changes down there. And so tonight, we're approving, if you so choose, $1,174,000 for the construction management design for this project. Now, you heard about this project last work meeting. It's being phased in. First phase is the headworks project, which this would be primarily involved with, so. Anything else we need to say, Scott? Okay, that's it.
Council, we talked about this, was it last week in our work meeting, wasn't it?
Yes.
So, and the increased capacity and all the things that need to happen, so. Any questions, discussion, or I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Bowen Collins and Associates for the headworks and UV disinfection project at the wastewater treatment facility in the amount of $1,174,000.
Motion by Michelle, second by Joe. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Hey, and just maybe for interest of the public, that the, these plans have been submitted to the state and we're waiting for their approval on this first phase of the project. And so, once we get the approval from the state, we will be ready to bid and get started on that project, so. Okay, then now we'll go to, since public hearings are scheduled for 5:30, we'll go to item six A, which is a report from the Planning Commission meeting held January ninth. And I hope our guys don't take five and a half hours like the Planning Commission did for their council meeting, so.
First item on the Public Planning Commission Report to the City Councils. Public hearings be advertised for February first, and there's four of them I'd like to read in. The first one is considered general plan amendment to amend the general plan from low-density residential to commercial on approximately six acres, and to amend the general plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential on approximately six acres. Property is generally located the southwest intersection of Dixie Drive and Canyon View Drive. The next one is considered general plan amendment to amend the Atkinville Plan and Desert Color Community South Block General Plan Land Use Map, along with associated text from open space to town center for approximately 25 acres. This is located approximately at the southeast intersection of exit one of the Southern Parkway and Southern Parkway. And Neighborhood Four Residential to Agriculture on approximately 25 acres, located at the southeast corner of Neighborhood Four and the Arizona border. The project is referred to as Desert Color Amendment One. The third item is considered a zone change for Ventana Commercial to change the zoning on 7.38 acres from R110 to Plan Development Commercial to allow development of six buildings on five separate lots. The property is generally located at the southeast corner of intersection 2450 South and River Road. And finally, the fourth item, consider a zone change from C3 to PDC, Plan Development Commercial, on approximately 3.32 acres to develop Fort Knox Two, which is a commercial project. That would include three buildings, and it's generally located at 2050 East Riverside Drive.
Okay, thank you, Ray. I entertain a motion on those.
I would move that we set the public hearing for items one A through D from the Planning Commision, Commission for February first, 2018.
Second.
Okay, a motion to set the public hearings by Joe, second by Ed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's kind of weird that I have to, that I vote to, and it gets me confused. Thank you. Go ahead.
Next item, item number two, consider a request to remodel an existing home and to continue its non-conforming side and rear yard setback. Subject property zone RCC is located at 157 Half East, 400 South. So this is a request to, to maintain a non-conforming structure. This is, the property is located here. This particular lot dates back as far as our plats go. Back in the early 50s or 60s, we showed this lot in existence, and so it's, it's a legal lot. It's a legal non-conforming lot. Here's the structure that exists now. What the applicant wants to do is remove, remove a most of this structure and rebuild a new thousand-square-foot house. And what the ordinance says, in its Title X, Chapter 14, "A building or structure occupied by a non-conforming use or a building or structure non-conforming as to its height, area, yard, or parking regulations shall not be added to, remodeled, or enlarged in any manner or moved to any location where such addition, remodel, enlargement, or relocation would also be non-conforming unless," so this is the provision that allows city council to let them continue their non-conforming setback. "Unless first recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and approved by the city council. In approving such request, it must be determined that the proposed change does not impose any unreasonable burden upon the lands located in the vicinity of the non-conforming use or structure." And so that's the ordinance that allows the city council to consider this non-conforming use. This is what they're proposing. They're proposing to remove a large portion of that structure and rebuild this thousand-square-foot house. Their non-conforming is a setback. In this particular zone, they required eight on the side. On each side, they have a seven foot, seven foot three, they're required to have eight foot. In the rear, they require 10 feet, they have six feet. And the other front and the side is conforming. So that's what we're looking at this evening, and that's the request, is allow them to maintain these two side and rear yard setbacks to remain.
Those setbacks will stay the same as the existing structure?
Yeah, they're not increasing the footprint, just maintaining the same setbacks. And Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval.
Any discussion? Questions for John? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I, Mayor Pro Tem, I make the motion that we approve the remodel of an existing home and continue in its non-conforming side and the rear yard setbacks as articulated by Mr. Willis.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ed, second by Michelle. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I think this is just another indication that people are looking at our downtown and re-looking at lots and, you know, the more we can do to encourage them without creating issues, you know, to take an old and put new. I mean, that just gives more credibility to our downtown, so I hope that we see more of these.
Yep, and that makes sense to have that in the ordinance where, you know, what's the incentive if I have to go smaller to go ahead and remodel, where we can go ahead and do what's theirs?
Leave it like it is right now.
Yep, and build new, that just, that's just, that's great. Good work.
Okay, item three from the Planning Commission Report is a request to consider vacating Lot 11 from the Morningside Professional Plaza, Third Amendment subdivision. Representatives Rosenberg Associates. Property is located at 640 East, 700 South, Zone is C3. Basically, the, here's 700 South right here and 700 East. The request is to vacate this parcel, this pad, out of this overall subdivision, and then you'll see later on that they'll create a separate plat for that pad itself. But the request, the request before you is just to vacate that lot, that pad, out of this subdivision.
Questions?
No, I will make a motion to approve vacating Lot 11 from the Morningside Professional Plaza.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Joe. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item four A from the Planning Commission Report is a request to approve a preliminary plat for an eight-lot residential subdivision called Bloomington Country Club, number 12. Site is located along Goldenrod Circle and Chaparral Drive in the Bloomington Development. Property is 2.35 acres. Density is 3.4 dwelling units an acre. Zone is R110. General plan shows this is low-density residential. The applicant is Sun River Bloomington Land LLC, Representative Tim Stewart. They are requesting, as you recall, the, these lots were originally left out of that Bloomington Country Club, number 11. The reason being was the floodplain for this Bloomington wash extended over into this area. However, they've gone through the FEMA process, they've raised the lots, and now the floodplain has been pulled out and put, and that becomes the new floodplain line, which then allows them to develop these lots. Each, they provided a base flood elevation here, showing the flood elevation of the 100-year floodplain right here, to show that they, each lot will be at least two feet higher than that base flood elevation.
What about the separate lot down there? Has that been mitigated with the floodplain?
Yeah, it wasn't part of the floodplain. It was just these lots, and so they held them out. They are requesting lot size averaging on these three lots as they fall below the 10,000 square feet. Now, normally the density, if you take the density alone of just these units, the density is 3.4 dwelling units an acre because the road was already dedicated when they did Phase 11. However, if you count the road, had they been able to plat it originally without the floodplain, then the density goes down to 2.9 dwelling units an acre. And so we felt comfortable with counting the road because it would have been part of it had the floodplain not been an issue. And so that's why the density exceeds the 3.2 that's allowed for lot size averaging, but we're counting the road in that density. The, and they are leaving two cart paths in the subdivision that will be property owned by the golf course. And then all the improvements have already been installed with this development, for this development.
Wes, just for the public, you indicated it just a little bit below 10,000 square foot lots, yet it indicates 10,000 square foot lot sizes. How far below?
They're in the 9,000 range. All of them are 9,000 or greater, these three lots right here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wes, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion if there's no other questions.
Motion to approve the preliminary plat subdivision for Bloomington Country Club, number 12.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ed. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item four B from the Planning Commission Report is a request to approve a preliminary plat for a three-lot commercial subdivision called Riverwoods Mills. Site is located approximately 800 West and 1600 South. Property is 7.11 acres. The zoning is Plan Development Commercial. General plan shows this is commercial.
General plan shows this is commercial. Represented over here today is Chris Peterson. They will be required to provide pri, uh, cross-access agreement as Lot Three does not have access to this future road right here, so they'll have to do a cross-access agreement. Also with this development, they're required to, because it falls within the erosion hazard, they're required to provide erosion hazard protection based on their, their erosion hazard study along this area here. And then they're also required to build this road through here, a portion of which is on city property that provides access to the, the cemetery. However, the developer and the city have worked out an agreement, which we just need to finalize, wherein the city and the developer are going to share the co, in the cost of the erosion protection as it provides protection for the cemetery and the trail, and sharing the cost of the road as the city, um, will use that road to continue to access their cemetery. And they've also offered to let the city use these parking stalls here on their property in, in, during times of like a funeral or something like that where they have a little bit of overflow. Originally, there was going to be a parking lot here, and that with this, this has allowed the city to eliminate the parking lot and provide more plots in this area here. So it's kind of a, it's a win-win deal for both parties, both the developer and the city. So we felt comfortable with kind of sharing the costs in those improvements.
Excellent.
Wes, since Gary stepped out, can you elaborate for the public a little bit, or a bit more about that wrap, just going along, how it turns out to be because of the flooding and so forth, that the city will join with, uh...
Right.
With Chris to...
To help pay for the cost. It was installed to about right here, originally back in 2010. However, with their study, it showed that it needs to extend around here to protect the building, which it also provides, like I said, a protection to both the trail and the cemetery. And that's where the city felt like there was some benefit to both parties.
Right, so it's a win-win, that's what Gary is alluding to. Thank you very much.
So Wes, we're, we're just approving the, the preliminary plat, are we approving also the cost sharing, or does that...
Well, the agreement isn't done yet, so it'd be subject to that agreement being finalized between the developer and the city.
Perfect. Any other questions for Wes?
Nope, I will make a motion to approve the preliminary plat subdivision for Riverwoods Mill with, um...
Subject to that agreement.
Subject to agreement between the city and the developer.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Michelle, uh, second by Joe. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, item four C is a request to approve a preliminary plat for a one lot subdivision called the Washington Field North Stake Center. Site is located at 3210 east and 1140 south, property is 5.47 acres. Zoning is A1, general plan LDR, applicant is PC Architects. So this is 1140 south here, here is 3210 east, which is the border between, uh, St. George and Washington County. And the developer will be required to pave, um, that, to construct that westerly portion of the roadway, as there is no roadway right now. Plus, there's a trail that comes along here, a multi-use trail, it's part of the city's master plan, so they'll be putting in a trail in lieu of sidewalk. This road is paved, but I talked to streets, the road was paved a long time ago when it was in a county, doesn't meet a city standard as far as, as far as thickness and so forth. So they, wherever, they'll need to remove at least 32 feet and repave it to meet a city standard, and then the rest of it will just stay until further development occurs, but they'll have to do that along that portion there. Um, and I think that's it. And there is an overhead power line, and I was just going to show you this. There is an overhead power line that goes along here through Washington and then through the site. The site's located right here, 1140 south, 3210 east. We, we've moved the roadway such that, you can see what they did with the overhead line here, is they actually continued it, they put a trail in here, Washington did, with a landscape strip, so that the overhead transmission line was in a location where it could be accessible by Dixie Power. We're going to try to continue that all the way through here, and so we, we've made sure that the road, that there's about 20 feet on the south side of the road where we continue that trail through here and do a landscape strip, and keep those power poles within an area where the Dixie Power can get to those poles, and we'll have to look at that as we go forward in the future and develop. But we tried to locate it so it doesn't get located in like homes or lots, or, you know, whatever is constructed in the future.
Is that the substation on the left of that?
Yeah, that is the substation.
So that property right there, we've been preliminary negotiating with the property owner for a...
Yes.
Wes, could you give me a better description, a little bit more for, for the public and myself, what the, what it's meant by Stake Center?
Uh, it's an LDS church, a large LDS church is what it is. That's going to be built right there.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I was getting hungry there for a minute.
[laughing]
Okay, um, any questions, any other questions for Wes? Thank you for that explanation, Wes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the preliminary plat subdivision for the LDS Stake Center located at 3210 east, 1140 south.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ed. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we move that one. Okay, item forty is a request to approve a preliminary plat for a two condominium project within an existing building called Morningside Professional Condominiums. Site is located 700 south and 640 east. It was Lot 11. Uh, let's see, zoning is C3. General plan shows this is commercial, applicant is Skylar Lawrence. So again, this is the parcel that was vacated, the, the pad that was vacated out, so now they're coming in and creating a two condominium, uh, plat within that existing building. There would be the first floor, and then this would be, I think, this is the, no, this is the first floor. So this would be private area, so you'd have one condominium, one condominium here, and then, um, common area in between, private, private, the same here on the second floor and the same on the third floor. Basically, they're just creating a condominium within that building, a two condominium unit. Well, actually, it's more condominiums, I think it's like six.
So that would mean they could be sold individually?
Right, right. And that's why they pulled it out, so that they could then create a condominium plat.
Gotcha. Perfect.
I don't remember this one, I remember this, but I don't remember if we questioned the parking. Does it have to have standalone parking there, or what?
The co, the parking, so they're, they're going to annex back into the association with the final plat, and so the parking is in common area, so it'll be common area to the association.
So this is still a preliminary plat?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Wes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the preliminary plat subdivision for Morningside Professional Condos.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ed. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item four E is a request to approve a preliminary plat for a three lot subdivision called Sandtown Bungalows. Site is located at 364 west, 400 north. Uh, property is .405 acres, the density is 7.5 dwelling units per acre. General plan shows this is medium density, the applicant is Stacy Young. So here's 400 north, 400 west, it's those three lots right there, that preliminary plat, it's where we vacated the public right away recently and working out a, a purchase and sell agreement with the applicant. The one thing this will be contingent on is working out easement. There's a power pole about right here and one right here, which has an overhead line that goes there and then provides power here and here. They're trying to, to take the one power pole down over here, and then they'll have to reroute power up to this one to then get power to here, so it'll be subject to working out an easement over that Lot One to provide power and access to that pole, that existing pole right there. So we haven't worked that out as far as where that easement will be located, so the plat will be subject to that.
It'll be worked out before the final plat?
Yeah. And that's why we, we originally were going to put the final plat on, but we need to still work that out and get that resolved.
Any other questions for Wes? Any, feel free to make a motion.
I'm just waiting for you two to wake up.
I can't make a motion too, can I?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat subdivision for Sandtown Bungalows.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Joe reluctantly. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Another, gay, indication that downtown is coming back a little bit with this project.
Yes.
Probably haven't seen hardly any new homes up in that whole area, or I was born and raised in that area, Sandtown, so it's exciting to see that. That's right. They can't remember now, so, so I hope that continues.
Okay, item five A is a request to consider approval of a seven lot commercial final subdivision plat called Commerce Point Phase One, representative is Pope Engineering, property is located at Bluff Street and Blackridge Drive, zone is C2. All aspects of this final plat were reviewed by staff, and it meets the conditions of the preliminary plat. And it's, oh, they didn't provide a graphic on that. It's basically at the corner of Bluff and Blackridge Drive, where that new Maverick is going on the north side, and then the property on the south side. It's in your packet, I don't know why they didn't provide a graph.
Counsel?
I'm ready to make a motion.
You have questions on that?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Unless, they do.
I already have a motion by Michelle written down here.
You should, yeah.
I'm teasing.
Motion to approve the final plat for the Commerce Point Phase One located at Bluff Street and Blackridge Drive.
Motion by Michelle, second by Joe. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item five B is a request to consider approval of a 16 lot residential subdivision final plat called Moreland Park Phase One, representative is Development Solutions. Property is located at 3,000 east and 1140 south, zone is R110. All aspects of the final plat were reviewed by staff, it meets the conditions of preliminary plat. Here is 3,000 east, 2780, kind of goes right between those two streets, uh, right there. And it's those lots right there.
Counsel, any questions?
So are those double fronting lots?
This is the only double fronting lot right here on 3,000 east. They haven't put in the landscape yet, as they're going to continue to go forward, so they've, they've provided a bond for that landscape strip.
But is there another road that goes on the north side?
No, there'll be units here, and it'll, these roads will go forward and then, or go to the north, and you'll see more double frontage lots on 3,000.
Wes, what's, what's the, oops, how many acres is that, and what's the density per acre?
Uh, you know, I don't remember on that one, but all the lots are greater than an R1, or greater than 10,000 square feet, so I would expect it's probably around the 3.2 range, the density.
3.2, that's good, thank you.
Any other questions? This is a final plat.
I would make a motion that we approve the final plat of Moreland Park Phase One.
Second.
Go ahead and mess me up there. Motion by Joe, uh, second by Michelle. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, this is, uh, item five C is a request to consider approval of a one lot condominium subdivision plat called Morningside Professional Condominiums, representative is Rosenberg Associates. Again, the property is located at 640 east, 700 south, zone is C3. All aspects of final plat reviewed by staff, it meets the conditions of preliminary plat. Again, this is the same thing, so now you're creating, there's the final plat for that one lot that's going to be condominiumized. And again, it follows the same thing where you have the private area and the common area within the building itself. And then again, it'll be annexed into that, that, uh, association there so that they can use the parking in the common area and so forth.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the final, final plat subdivision for Morningside Professional Condominiums.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ed. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I think, Mayor, if you'd like, uh, we can go back to public hearings, it was scheduled for 5:30.
Okay.
Item three A.
All right, item three A, um... For those of you that are just joining us, don't be alarmed, the mayor's just out of town, so I'm running the meeting today as mayor pro temp, so, go ahead.
Thank you. Item three A, public hearing to consider amending the Plan Development Commercial Zone, located approximately 1100 east Riverside Drive, to develop a single-story medical office building on Lot Two of the BGG Commercial Subdivision. So here's Riverside Drive, the property is right in here, and just for reference, here's the post office, here's River Road. And it is a portion of this property, Lot Two is actually up in here, this was just showing ownership for all of that, that parcel. And this is the shape of the property that you'll be looking at. Zoning again is Plan Development Commercial, general plan supports commercial. And here is the site plan, um, I'll show a better one here in just a moment, a more detailed landscaping, but basically a green area landscaped area, the building here, and then the parking and the access. And this is the one I referred to, you can see a little bit better. Sidewalk, trees, grass area, uh, to meet and exceed city standards, and a proposed commercial building. Now, the colors and materials, they're all, as I'm showing them on the screen, but they're also, you probably noticed, they're on the wall there behind you if you need to look at closer detail. They're just down there, I didn't put them up. But you can see the design of the building, um, the articulation, the stonework, the colors. And the top of the parapot pet, excuse me, the very highest point isn't over 22 feet. Again, this is just single story. And again, on the floor behind you is this picture of the materials and color board, so you can see the colors that were referenced in that. The Planning Commission does recommend approval, and let me read briefly what they had made as a motion. Planning Commission recommends approval of the zone change amendment to amend the Plan Development Commercial Zone on approximately .79 acres to develop a medical office as presented, and recommends the following. First is the zone amendment, they recommend approval. Two, the use, it's in harmony with the previously approved PD use for that area. You'd be looking at the site plan, the layout, where the building is, the driveway, the parking, uh, the colors and materials are recommended for approval. The setbacks, staff will address during the civil engineering plan review process. Landscaping, they'll have to meet, uh, the section of the code 1025 that governs that. And just looking at the drawings, we don't see an issue, it looks like it meets and exceeds. Lighting, um, we've tried to have this as a standard note, provide a photometric plan when they turn in a civil engineering plans. It's very typical not to exceed a foot candle at property line. Here we had, don't exceed 10-foot candles on site. I know there's been a lot of discussion of lighting lately, and on some of them, uh, the Planning Commission has even recommended up to 15. It's just a recommendation, depending on how the council feels about it. This is an office building, it's not a car lot or a convenience store, uh, those levels look pretty reasonable, and we expect the lights will be on the building itself. And finally, last two items from Planning Commission, uh, standard, they'll be required to do the civil engineering site plan review, and shared access, city attorney's office will review, um, the access and the parking and make sure that everything's, uh, to the city's agreement. That concludes staff's comments.
Ray, could you tell me, that road that runs, uh, on the south side of where the, uh, post office is in this lot, is, is that public road, or is that a private road?
Are you talking along in here?
Right by the, where the river is, between the river and this, and right behind.
Everything internal here is...
Right, right down south, right there, there's a road in there that goes...
There is a long road, my understanding, and that's all private.
That's a private road?
Yeah.
And, and this lots will be able to access that as well?
Yes, and again, our city attorney's office will look at any documents they have on that. We, we don't anticipate any problems with that, but it'll have to be looked at.
That just about finishes up all that extra land in there that planned for the last few years.
Well, they'll put the building here, and then there's opportunities for maybe one or two more buildings you might see in the future in here. But yeah, otherwise, that, that pretty much completes this whole area.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ray? Does the applicant, you doing this one, Jeff? Anything, oh.
Hi, I'm Brendan Hall with MRW Design, and he presented, Ray presented it really well, the building. We feel like it fits nice into the neighborhood, it's a nice improvement, it's also low, you know, the use is low traffic, and feel like the building fits nice into the environment. Is there any questions or concerns that you have?
Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Okay, appreciate it. Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time for any who have come to speak on this issue. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to you, counsel, for your discussion and the action.
Well, it looks like you're gonna have a lot of nice trees around there, doesn't it? That's nice.
It's a little better than the tumbleweeds.
Yes, it is.
Not quite as good as the cows.
No, no.
Go ahead, counsel, it's up to you at this point, it's in your hands. I'm kind of off the hook.
I'll make a motion to amend the planned development commercial zone located at approximately 1,100 East Riverside Drive to single-story medical office building on Lot 2.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Michelle and a second by Joe, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, now, does this have to be a roll call, Sean? Okay, so, so, all in favor of the zone change, starting with Joe?
Aye.
We're going this way, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you. Ray, keep us going.
Next item is item 3B, public hearing to consider amending the planned development commercial zone generally located at 1,600 South Circle to develop the Hendrickson Butler Building and for approval of a second future building in the River Woods Mill Commercial Subdivision. So you did see this area presented by Wes a few minutes ago, and this is just for reference. Previously, in April of 2017, City Council approved this building back here for River Woods. And tonight, you'll be looking at basically the whole area and the development in this section. So aerial, just for reference, Tonicant Office Campus is here, the cemetery, and again, we'll be looking back in this area. The zoning is planned development commercial, the end of the cul-de-sac is shown, will be about here, so all of this is within PDC. And then, most all of this here is commercial, and it's land use. This is the overall site plan, again, just for reference, this is the one that was approved back in April. And tonight, you're looking at this building, and then also, they're requesting to have approved a conceptual building here for the future. And a close-up detail of that. These are the elevations, again, all of the graphics and displays are also there on the floor if it's helpful to you behind you. Here's a rendering of what the building would look like. And the perspective is such, as you're looking here, you're seeing the building that Hendrickson would like to have developed, and then this is the one that's called a future that's sharing a common wall here. And the materials and colors again are shown here, match the renderings, and they are on the floor there behind you if you need to look at those a little closer. I'm gonna look briefly at the staff report, this on 7.11 acres, planned development, the first building's about 20,000 square feet, the second one would be slightly bigger, 20,500. And the height of the main building is 32 feet, seems to meet and exceed setbacks. Parking, it appears the site will meet the minimum parking requirements, this will have to be confirmed during staff's civil engineering plan review and make sure legal department approves of the parking and the access. Landscaping, they'll meet, need to meet the requirements of the code. Planning Commission does recommend approval. I'll touch briefly on these points, very similar last one. Zoning, they recommend approval of PDC on approximately 7.11 acres as presented. The use is in harmony with previously approved Tonicant Plan Development Plan area. You'd be looking at the site plan, the layout, where the building is, the colors and materials, the design of the buildings. Again, Planning Commission recommends the design, the setbacks staff will look at, landscaping staff will verify. Lighting, the same comments, provide a photometric plan, we haven't seen that yet, we'll see that when they do the civil. One-foot candle at property line and recommended by Planning Commission is not to go over 10. That would be up to your judgment, 10 or 15, or if you felt more. Again, these are buildings, we don't expect a lot of illumination out there, so that looks like it's reasonable. Nine, site plan review, and 10, shared access. Applicants shall provide evidence to the City Attorney's Office, shared access has been provided to the site to their satisfaction. I think I've covered everything, that concludes staff's comments, and the same representative from MRW is also here, I think, to comment on it. I did put some information in here from their website about the type of business, and you may know that already, but just to see if that was helpful.
Ray, perhaps if you're not able to answer this, maybe Chris can. The initial development that was put in there for Riverwood, this will not be a Riverwood business, is this land gonna be leased or sold to this company?
I'll let the applicant address that, my understanding is this is a totally different business. As we've heard at the Planning Commission and the information I tried to put in here, it's not, it's not the Riverwood business, but I'll have to let them address the ownership and how that's split.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ray? Does that applicant have anything to add? One of them.
Should I be offended by that statement?
Gary's already warned me about my neighbor here.
I'm a bad neighbor, but I'll probably try harder here. I can answer any questions about our business, no, we're gonna own the building Hendrickson Butler, as HB Intermountain Holdings, that's our parent company. So we hold all our assets in Salt Lake City, in Nevada, in Utah, in Idaho, in that separate company. The third building, we're gonna own together, Chris and I.
So the preliminary plat you guys approved a little bit ago, Lot 2, they're buying outright, be their business, their building?
Okay. And then Lot 3, we will own together and develop the third building together.
Great, thank you.
Our intent is to design, is to bring like-minded, design-driven companies to do. Most of you are familiar with what we do, I think, do you have any questions about our business and what we do in that category?
Pretty buildings.
Thank you. Actually, I redid your bid an hour ago, it's more.
One thing, the Hendrickson Butler attorney reviewed the Planning Commission motion and vote, and they asked us to make sure at this meeting that you guys realized, it wasn't just specifically addressed, that they do have a warehouse component in their company, and I think you know that, but we just wanted to make sure that that's officially approved.
Just make sure that it's approved in the minute so that we have, you know, but yeah, a good portion, as you can see, we have semi trucks coming and going, all our stuff comes in, we don't do any manufacturing in the facility, everything comes in. We're looking for a higher level design in the whole entire building, I think you can see that in what we prepared.
That traveler's happy with all of this, isn't he?
Okay, he's very happy. So is Snow Jensen and Reese. And the other landowner actually was in the Planning Commission meeting and spoke in behalf of us. And we have cross-parking agreements in place that we're activating between those two, other property owners too.
Perfect.
Great.
Any questions for them, counsel, while they're up here? Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, any, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time for any who have come to speak on this item. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to you, counsel, for your discussion or action.
Mayor, it seems like everything's been covered pretty well by the planning department on this, compliments to them, so I would make a motion that we approve the amendment of the planned development commercial zone generally located at 1,600 South Circle to develop the Hendrickson Butler Building for approval of a second future building in the River Woods Mill Commercial Subdivision.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ed and a second by Joe, any discussion on the motion? Okay, this is a roll call vote, starting with Ed this time.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, exciting stuff.
Yep.
What we got next, Ray?
Item 3C, public hearing to consider amending the planned development commercial zone generally located at the intersection of Astragalus Road and the Southern Corridor to develop the Archibald Commercial Center. So here's the zoning map, here's the I-15 freeway, here's the Southern Corridor, and that big shots golf business you recently approved would be right here, and this is down where X marks the spot, Astragalus is right here again, next to the Southern Corridor. The general plan, it's VC1. And this is a layout, basically what you're looking at is a restaurant, Archibald's Restaurant here, and then a C store, convenience store, plus the associated canopy and fueling, and then a car wash. So you're really looking at 1, 2, 3, 4 items tonight. What you're not looking at is here is a future restaurant pad, that would have to come back with a zone change amendment in the future, but you are looking at the conceptual layout of the site, the parking, the access, the layout, the buildings. A little better view, again, restaurant here, convenience store, car wash, and future pad, and you can kind of see and feel how the landscaping is going to be handled, it'll have to meet the minimum requirements, it looks like it meets and exceeds, but staff, until we get the actual numbers, actual dimension sheets, then we will verify that. Again, the foam boards with all of these are behind you and the material boards, these are the elevations for the restaurant itself. You can see a lot of interesting designs and pops out and combination materials, a lot of stone and synthetic stucco. And then also is the elevations for the C store and then for the canopy, the C store is these top illustrations and then the canopy on the bottom. And then the car wash, the details for that. The buildings all seem to have the same themes, very same or similar colors and treatments, so that looks more harmonious for the commercial center. And then again, you can visualize it here with the rendering of the restaurant and the convenience store, canopy, car wash, and then these are to show and stimulate all of them together how you would view it on site. It appears to be just for automotive, it doesn't look like it has room for trucks, like a truck stop from what we can determine. And then the materials and colors here, and again, that's on the floor behind you. Planning Commission does recommend approval. I'm looking at page 2 for starters, on the bottom, the colors and materials are all called out there, they match what's on the board behind you. Jumping over to page 3, the Planning Commission recommends approval of zone change amendment on approximately 4.48 acres to develop Archibald's. Number 1, they recommend this zone change amendment to be approved. 2, the uses are in harmony with the Atkinville Master Plan. 3, the site plan, you're looking at the layout. 4, you're looking at the colors and materials as presented. 5, staff will look at setbacks, staff, excuse me, will look at landscaping. 7, lighting, provide a photometric plan with the submittal of the site plan review, demonstrate lighting will not exceed 1-foot candle at property. Planning Commission recommended only 10-foot candles, but that's a recommendation. And I know that topic comes up a lot, I don't want to open a can of worms, I do have the light measurement device here, a meter, and where I'm standing right now is about 18-foot candles, that kind of gives you a feel for the illumination. And 8 would be site plan review, the civil plan review. Signage, they'll have to comply with city's sign ordinance, no special requirements were asked. 10, the future restaurant building, the pad, they'll have to come back again with zone change amendment. And I think that concludes Planning Commission's recommendation. And staff is available to answer questions and/or the representative. That concludes my comments.
Okay, do you have questions for Ray at this time?
I have a challenge with the 10-foot candle foot, whatever that might be. Can this be passed, subject to review at the site?
Let's, I think we can shed some light on that.
Light on the light?
Is the applicant, or the representative here that wants to speak, I think, is Jeff, and he's done some excellent research on this for us, so.
Thank you for that, you know, you're puffing me up over here, Jimmy. I'm Jeff Mathis, architect with MRW Design, appreciate you guys' time and having us up for today. Thought I'd just take a second to thank Gary Eskman for all the work he's done for the city, and appreciate you, and good luck moving forward. What we've done, and I've actually spoken with each one of you already about this, so I guess we can kind of go through this fairly quickly. I went through and did the observations just at different spots, that's the Harman's canopy, so the Harman's canopy... Oh, that doesn't work. I believe this is the newest canopy in town, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so I went out there and just put down the light meter, I stood back as far as I could so I wasn't shot on it, you know, and make sure it was looking good, and so Harman's was 25-foot candles. In my opinion, that was just a little bit, it felt a little bit dark to me, but I think it's a pretty good example of what can be accomplished. But then around the rest of town, I went and looked at Steven Wade, and their main driveway was 6-foot candles, the Maverick on Hilton Drive, the foot candles under that canopy is 53, Sinclair on Boulevard was 40.
That's right, under the canopy?
Yeah, I'd get, I'd try to give an average, so I'd get in between all the lights were around and just get right in the middle of the driveway, so it was the best average, because we could've went right under the light and it would've been a little bit brighter. So I tried to find the best average for that on all these locations. And then just a typical parking lot at Red Rock Commons, right under the light with 7-foot candles, between two lights was 2. And then the Zion's Bank, they have a different lighting system there, it's those high-pressure sodium lights, but that's a 15-foot candle. And then I know there was some discussion, oh, just a regular street light on 900 South is 3-foot candles. And the Tag and Go down there on River Road was 25 at the vacuum stalls, and then, where are we at, 3 in the middle of the main driveway. I think that, the biggest problem we had with Tag and Go was this, none of the light fixtures were shielded, you got those big bars of the vacuums and they just, and it looks a lot brighter than it actually is at 25-foot candles. So I just wanted to give you guys those observations, hopefully you were able to maybe visit some of those sites and look at with your own eyes, because the cameras don't do it justice, I don't believe, but, and kind of gauge how you felt when you were there based on those readings. I'd urge the council to go to around the 40-foot candles range for a canopy. The other items we have, other issue we have is obviously security and safety for the public that comes and goes, but we've also got the safety and security of the fuel truck drivers. They typically unload these big tankers at night, and one of the issues our clients have in is wouldn't, with the recommendation from the Planning Commission, only 10-foot candles, their fueling suppliers are not wanting to cut a deal with them because they feel it's too dark and for, to be safe with the big tanker trucks and unloading all that gas in the middle of the night. So that was another thing, we're hoping that we can get a fuel deal if we can get a good bright canopy, not bright, but I think 40-foot candles in that range would be what we'd like to shoot for. Other than that, I think the rest of the project, you guys saw it, if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I have to ask you about these Archibald Restaurants, what the menu is, I know the Desert Hills High School, it's a long ways to drive for lunch, you gotta do it quick. What kind of restaurants are they going to be, can you tell us a little bit more?
Yeah, it's, from what I understand, I've never been one, it's, there's probably five or six up in California. Yeah, it's, from what I understand, I've never been one. There's probably 5 or 6 of them in California. It's kind of a new startup franchise, but they will be, it's a hamburger stand. Firstly-cooked hamburger stand, kind of a different twist on an old favorite.
And if I can, John Willis, I'd like to ask, your measurements were down at ground level. You had them on the ground.
Right.
If I ask John if he could comment a little bit on the top of the canopy and how that would relate? And is there any connection with this and the ordinance you're putting forth as to how we can separate out auto sales lots, car lots, as far as lighting? Are we going to be okay with that? We set precedent on this one?
So there's a lot of ways to measure. There's on the ground, there's the canopy. The way that we've looked at doing it is taking the actual light fixture and figuring out what the average of the light fixture is, not taking the, not taking the reading from the ground. Like the Harmon's canopy, for instance, it's about 53.
So that would be 53?
53 lumens, which is, they're comparable. One is a, one is a European measurement. The other is an American measurement. So they're real similar. In regards to the car dealership, that's something we can discuss with the ordinance. I think there's a few options where the majority of our dealerships are and they're PDs. And so that may provide a little bit of the ability to regulate those if the council chooses to. But that'd be probably a different discussion when we're looking at the ordinances. But, you know, the difficult thing that we have is these measurements are taken from the ground, not up at the canopy. And so really, the only data that we have is that latest Harmon's fuel canopy, which again is 53.
Okay, so you're talking about just the fixture?
Yeah, so the way we do it is we take the fixture, the output of the actual fixture, and that's provided by the electrical detail that's submitted with the photometric plan. We take that detail on the lighting, we add up all the lumens, and then we divide it by the size of the canopy. And that's how we create our average over the canopy.
So Harmon's is 53 and he's asking for 40?
Well...
So we're talking about 2 different measurements here. We're talking about the light meter measurement and the fixture measurement. Which I think, I would think the fixture measurement, the way you're talking, John, would be the easiest way for people who are coming in and applying to be able to know that they're within compliance.
So, so the benefit is, we have all that information. The difficult thing is trying to figure out what existing ones are, because we don't have a lot of that information. This is, so this is some of our comparison, and these are the ones that have been approved so far. And these are the lumens, not the foot candles. And so the Harmon's, again, is 53. The Terrible Herps, which was approved, they were approved at 10, 10 lumens. The Maverick on South Bluff.
You're seeing 10 lumens at the fixture?
That's on the average.
Oh, on the average, okay.
On the average. And so most of the fixture range between 10,000 to 15,000 lumens. And so when you, when you take that average, that's what the average is. The Maverick, they're proposing 49. The Hearts, which is over on Snow Canyon, 38. The Desert Hills Plaza, which is at KB Oil, they're at 108. And so, most of these, well, most of these have come in right around between 70 and 90 lumens. And we've, we've had conversations and we've discussed the ordinance. And voluntarily, all of these have reduced their lumens, except the Desert Hills Plaza, they remain the 108.
Okay. Does that make sense, Jeff? I mean?
Yeah, I could.
Yeah.
What I think was an interesting observation I found from what John put together here. And as he said, the Harmon's was the only one that's been built that we've actually measured on the ground. And it was interesting to me that a 53 average equaled a 25-foot candle on the ground. And that actually is, if you look at the other ones, around a 50 gives us about a 25 on the ground. And then our Desert Hills one. Which I think I'm going to work with you on, and we're going to try to bring that down a little bit, but... So I just thought it was an interesting correlation. If we are going to end up with an ordinance that has averaged, averages the lumens by the square footage of the canopy, and you, and that's what we're going to have written, then I think that there's a correlation between 50, around 50 lumens per square foot and about 25-foot candle. So in my case, I guess I'd be asking for closer to around 70 or 80 lumens a square foot, and I'd, I know we'd come in around 40-foot candles. I mean, I don't know if that's directly proportional, but we will do a photometric plan that would meet, would show us the foot candles on the ground as well. So we could, if you want to write, or give us an approval basing on something that we can pin back to around the 40-foot candles is what.
So for future, future reference, as we work on a lighting ordinance, would that be easier for you to have the average lumens per square foot like John was describing, or?
As long as it comes back to a real something that we can measure. And that's where I struggle with it. And that's why with this interesting correlation, it's, at least at these fuel canopies, they're about 20 feet tall. It's about half. So half, half the lumens at the top is about half the foot candles at the bottom, or half of those lumens at 25.
Right, so the height of the, the height of the canopy would definitely affect that?
It does. Yeah, if the canopy was 1 foot tall, then you'd have the 52 lumen, the average would be 52-foot candles. But it's the distance that starts breaking that down.
Counsel, you guys have questions?
I just have an issue with all of this. I just think it's preposterous, if I can use that word. Under a canopy, okay, I live in Bloomington Hills, so once that new Maverick on River Road was built, you know, it's bright under the canopy. As a woman, if I go to get gas late at night, I want it lit up. But right in front of the Maverick, right behind the Maverick, it's dark. You can see the sky. But if I go by Tag &amp; Go where they had no canopy, those vacuumed seemed like you needed sunglasses on when you passed them at night, because it's going everywhere. This is different. It's straight down and I just, we just seem to be like so struggling over this, and I don't know why. We're not a dark city. We're never going to be a dark city. I'm not saying we need to be like the Strip on Las Vegas. But, you know, we'd need some lights at some places. That's just how it is. But that's all my, that's, that's me. That's my two cents.
I think as we've discussed this in the past and discussed with staff, more at issue might be the shielding of the lights versus the actual lumens. Because when you're under that canopy, like Michelle's saying, you, you look at a lot of those and you're telling us all these numbers different. And you look at them, even in, in real life, as you drive by them, I'm sitting there going, "I don't know. I can't tell the difference. I mean, is one darker than the other?" Other than Zion's Bank, which is a different light. It's just a different kind of light. Which I don't, I was surprised at how the lumens you said was on that, because it just seems dark around that building.
Or like the, the office building I work with up on the Black Ridge Terrace. At night, for a while, there was hardly any lights out there at night. And when you left at night, it was a little, it was a little freaky. And it, it's so different. Now the Maverick's going to be down there around the corner. Under that canopy, it's going to be different. I mean, we're not saying bright, put neon lights on everything, but I don't know.
So regardless, we're still, the jury's still out on our lighting ordinance, but I, the staff is doing a really good job of getting us some information. We started out with not a lot, because we didn't know what we were doing, and we're getting it pinpointed down. So I guess that's for, for the council to discuss here on this issue. But is there any other questions for Jeff before we open the public hearing?
I would just ask, Jeff, was the chief of police able to satisfy your inquiries as to safety aspects of it?
Yeah, I actually, I'd had to call into the chief and I had a return call from one of the, someone else up there. But I caught him in the back and I asked him what he thought about the lighting levels under canopies and lower lighting levels. And he just felt like, he said something to the fact that we always prefer higher lighting levels, anywhere we can get them. So, because that's going to deter crime.
Yeah, and as a side note, I did speak with Betty, and she was, that was the only thing she was worried about tonight, not being here. She's a little, she's a little concerned that we, we would make it too dark. And, and so she was concerned about that, so for what that's worth.
Great.
So, thank you, Jeff. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing for those who have come to speak on this item. Go ahead. Make sure you state your name for the record.
Judy Bozeman, this is just a question. Is it possible to turn the lights up and down, like darker, more?
Very good question.
Because if the issue, he said the public safety issue was their service people that come to fill the big tanks, the big tankers, don't want, don't like to fill them in the dark because it's a safety issue. Well, can you not turn the lights up, like? Is that possible?
I know we were trying to do that for a demonstration purpose and we found out we couldn't. So I, but I, I'm assuming that something had to be installed on the front side to make sure they were dimmable or?
But if you're just beginning, now would be the time to do it. Thank you.
My understanding is you can do that. You can, you can.
You can.
You can have an attachment on the lights that then can go up or down. We didn't have it on our lights up to the yard when we were doing that. But my understanding is you can. I don't know the cost. I don't know if there's any in town that does that. But we did have a discussion about that, is whether or not that might be appropriate. Just in case they were to, right, if you got more uses there and that. So it is possible, I believe, to do that.
We have some streetlights that we actually?
Right, we're trying to start doing ours, yeah.
So we might be able to set up where you could take a look at it, but...
So that's something we should be discussing as we move forward with our lighting ordinance. So that our developers and engineers and designers know. Is there anyone else that came to speak on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to you, counsel, for your discussion and action, keeping in mind that the Planning Commission did approve this with a 10? What was it, their approval?
10.
They just recommended a 10.
Recommended, so.
It'll be up to you if you want 15 or 30 or 40 or?
So there you have it.
So I have a question. We sit there and we've talked every, almost every time about a canopy. What would happen if we, if that canopy was way low, but then they just went out and put a bunch of lights up, light poles? I mean, they could, I, I don't want to see that happen. But that's how they could get around it. That's why I think we have to be very reasonable on what we pick for the?
I think they have to meet, they have to meet the lumens on the whole project. You couldn't, you couldn't say that, that they could get away from the canopy issue. It's a, it's a light for the project, all of project.
When, when we get a photometric plan, think of the whole site plan. You got a little point and it's got a number by it for the entire site. You'll see the higher numbers under the rectangular shape for the canopy, and you're going to see some high numbers. You get out the perimeter, it's going to drop down to 1, and a lot of the parking lots is going to be 5 or 6 or something. Light will drop off quickly. So we, we do have that information. Them putting up poles instead of a canopy, I, I don't have an answer to that. I don't.
Well, they couldn't, they could not put the poles up and then increase the lumens if, if the council sets that standard. I mean, it's more than just the canopy, it's the project.
We've looked at both of those, the canopy and then the project lighting, it's 2 separate lighting. It just seems to be the canopy is the one that is lit up the most and not the parking lots. So that's where the focus.
But we wouldn't allow anything came in, if the council said you're going to have 15 lumens underneath that canopy, we would not allow them to go out off-site and then put light poles up to get more light. Because that would have to be approved as part of their PD, because it's a PD zone. So I don't think that could happen if, you know, you limited 1. Well, we need to make sure that doesn't, because that's not the intent of the lighting ordinance.
That issue still is the fact that if we say, based on the fixture, that we want an average of, even if we say an average of 40, which is being requested, if that canopy on the next project happens to be at 20 feet versus 18, down at ground level, it's going to be a different?
Could be.
Lumen.
Yeah.
Right now, right now, you'd have to prove it anyway, because it'd have to come to you.
Right.
But if you do your ordinance, that's when you're going to have to address it in the ordinance to say height might make a difference on where you measure what that light value is. And that's why it's tough to, to design an ordinance, because you've got so many variables on, you know, size of project and heights, like you've talked about, and uses. And so it's, yeah, and I mean, and then you've got others around town that are already there. Are you going to retrofit or pass something to make them come to a standard within a number of years? Otherwise, you're, you're not going to make an effect if the, if the intent is to lower that light, that light average throughout the city. So it's a tough issue, and that's why you, you see lots of varying ordinances throughout the country. And there's some that, that have very strong, but most of those don't have commercial. And I think there's a difference between commercial and residential as well as, and so we're going to have that issue for a long time.
I, I think we're, I think we still need to refocus on shielding and spillage is where we're going to have a better impact than on lumens. And even, in the case of this application, I don't think, what, 40 is what they're asking for?
You want 40 on the ground.
On the ground?
On the ground.
It's 40-foot candles on the ground, not 40 lumens average.
Which the Harmon's is 25 on the ground, right?
Yes.
Which, did you have one that was 40 on the ground on your pictures?
I did. It was?
Maybe that'll help.
It's the Sinclair Station on the Boulevard. It was measured at 40.
So, so that's what you have to look at, counsel. And again, we don't have an ordinance in place, but we're, we're asking people to, we're telling people that, hey, we're?
Yes.
Yeah.
And see, to me, the one across the street is much brighter.
You know, I measured that and I didn't put it in the thing, but it was, it was up around 50. It was a little bit brighter.
And what was this one?
This one's 40 foot candles.
On the ground?
That's on the ground.
It's the ground. And that's one thing I think, to me, what we provide these guys when we check our, our drawing plans is a photometric plan, which shows foot candles on the ground. So why are we talking about an average of lumens of who knows how height's going to be up and down and left and right? Why don't we just say foot candles on the ground, provide me a photometric plan that says, here's your foot candles. Match it, meet it, be under it, and then you, the questions go away, don't they?
Well, I don't know, being a devious person, then I would just go out there and build a higher canopy and put more lights on it, because again, it would be the same down on the ground.
All right, that's fair.
No, but I just think it's?
Maybe you're going to have to, maybe you have to tie it to some different heights then. Maybe you're going to have to say between 15 and 20 feet, this is your average lumens, between 25 and 30. I mean, if we're going to get that deep into it, and you're going to try to, I mean, that's one way, I guess.
I, I think, moving forward, now we've got to talk about this issue tonight, but moving forward, I think we, I think we can come up with a higher than what we may have been anticipating number on the lumens and refocus our efforts back on shielding and spillage. Because at my parking lot, I don't even have to use my parking lot lights anymore. And I have 15 lumens on the ground all over it from the neighbors, so, which I don't care. I'm good with it, but... But if I was a home, a neighborhood, I might say, oh, that kind of sucks, because I can't sleep at night, because I'm lit up like a car lot. Yes.
I think that whatever we decide, we need to get after it and get it decided. It is not fair to have one across the freeway from here who wanted to have more and we, and the Planning Commission recommended them to do less. So they lowered theirs to 10 or 15. And then the next one asked for more, and then we've raised it. We've got to get the thing resolved and you, we've got to decide what that acceptable level is. So that we don't have to have the Planning Commission beating up the peoples. They come in, they come in, they meet that requirement, and then we're done. But right now, you've got it all over the board, and if somebody's willing to work and say, oh, I don't need that much, then they get this level, and then right across the street from them, you've got somebody that's got 3 times that. So either we got to be one or the other. And so I think that some of them voluntarily said, I don't need that light. But, you know, and that's okay for their project, but I just think we need to be consistent, is all I'm suggesting. And so the sooner we can get your direction as a staff to say, yes, what was suggested here tonight, what's the candle, what's the candle power on the ground? And that's we, our minimum, I mean, our maximum is 40? Unless there's extenuating circumstances, and then let's draw our ordinance up around that so we don't have to debate every time a project comes in, the situation. Because everything's a little bit different. I know there might be some variations to that, but still, you know, 40 here and 100 here, why?
But 10 seems a little?
Well, 10's a little, I, you know, that's, I understand what the Planning, Planning Commission's trying to look at the, you know, the night, night sky and all that, but in a commercial area, I think that's pretty tough to do.
Very good. That's the wisdom right there that comes with age.
You, remember you said that, Jimmy.
Okay, counsel, so that, very, and I, hey, I want to, one more time, tell the staff how much I appreciate their efforts and for them being so nimble as we try to make up our mind, right?
Yeah, good job.
So. So, okay, counsel, it's up to you to craft this so that, oh, yeah, I did, I closed it, yeah. Signed, sealed, and delivered.
Mayor, I'd make a motion, if you're ready, if you want one, unless you want. I'd make a motion that we amend the planning development commercial zones generally located at the intersection of Australicus Road and the Southern Corridor to develop the Archibald Commercial Center at Bush and Goodell are the applicants. And make sure that we have the light switch that you can go up and down on, if necessary.
Gotta have a level.
And the ground level of forty.
So if we, okay.
So if we say that forty at the ground level, we haven't really determined what it is at twenty feet. I think that's where we...
Do we have to determine?
I think it needs to be a lot brighter than ten. A lot brighter than ten.
Well, that's where you're looking at DAP up there.
Right.
Yeah, but if it's ten feet up at the lighter, ten feet on the ground.
Well, we've already, I think we've already established that the photometric plan is on the ground, correct? When you submit your photometric plan, that's, you're submitting it with lumens on the ground.
So it's on the ground.
On the ground.
So you was at forty lumens underneath, or forty-foot candles under the canopy, and the rest of the site?
What do you...
Ten or less on the rest of the site, forty under the canopy at a maximum.
What's the rest of the site?
Ten or less, maximum of ten on the remaining of the site, forty underneath the canopy as a maximum.
Do I hear fifteen?
Okay, so, so we're not, just to be clear, we're not establishing an ordinance here, but we're trying, for this project in specific, and so we're kinda hearing that forty is a good number under the canopy, and ten is a good number on the rest of the site, not that that's written in stone for the future, but we need, like the city manager says, we need to get to that. So back to the motion that we have right now.
On the ground level.
If you'll just restate your motion, go ahead.
Forty on the ground.
Forty on the ground.
Ten on the site.
And ten's on the joint area.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ed, a second by Michelle. In that motion, there was just one thing to be clear on. In the motion, he asked about adjustable. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, I think they're happy if it's forty on the ground, they don't need adjustable.
Jeff's agreeable to having a control switch that we can go up and down it, if it's necessary.
We can do lighting controls, but if that's part of the motion.
I think that that would just be good in case it turned out different than what you really wanted. They could adjust it a little bit. If your new ordinance allows something different where you're at, then they can then, instead of having to go back in and retrofit their thing like you're gonna have to have, they would be able to do it without...
Just under the canopy, correct?
Yes, just under the canopy.
And just to clarify, that adjustment would only be there so that we finally get a number somewhere, because we're not gonna go out there and monitor that every day.
I think that, I think the problem is this, I think the problem is this, if you, or some other council, ten years from now, says all of a sudden that they want ten under the canopy, and then they pass, like we've discussed, how to make the others that are outside of what you want conform by giving a period of time to bring them into compliance, they wouldn't have to do anything other than adjust their light, and that sort of saved them if that ever happened. Now, whether, I don't know the cost of it, I don't know the feasibility of doing that, but if they could do it, that would certainly be, and they were willing to do it, that would certainly be something that might work, 'cause then you could maybe adjust it during, like was suggested, adjust it, but maybe they can do a little bit higher there when they have a delivery or something, you know?
Okay, so, do you understand that in all fairness? Does the council understand the motion as it stands?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion. Any further discussion on the motion? This is a roll call vote, so let's start with Joe.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you for the good discussion. Thank you for your research, Jeff, appreciate that, and we look forward to more to come.
Yeah, keep going on.
Who doesn't wanna talk about lumens and candle lights, and, I mean, geez, it's good stuff.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is item six B. That's consider approval of accepting a donation from the Dinosaur Crossings LLC. This is for 1.85 acres, and is primarily down in the Virgin River floodplain area. And so as staff, we would recommend that we, as we've done in the past, as we try to control the ownership of that floodplain area, that we would accept this donation.
Motion to accept the donation agreement with the Dinosaur Crossing LLC.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Ed. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Did we do five A, or was I asleep?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Paul, I jumped down to the staff reports. Five A is a resolution authorizing the representation and approving the representation on the solid waste board, which I believe is the mayor and all the council people, so...
So it's all of us, no one excluded?
Yay. I will make a motion to approve a resolution appointing representatives, we don't have to name them all, do we, Sean? To the Washington County Special Service District.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ed. Any discussion on the motion? Now, this is a resolution, does that require a roll call? So, roll call vote, starting with Ed.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Guys approved yourselves on the board, great job. Okay, what else we got? Do we have any need for a closed session? Oh, hallelujah. Okay, before we adjourn the meeting, though, at the request of the mayor, we have to discuss one other item in the public meeting. But we're excusing our city manager while we discuss that.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Gary. Until next week.
One more, one more city council meeting.
Oh, no. Okay, counsel, the mayor wanted us to speak briefly about our farewell party for Gary, that's why we excused him. We just need to have a discussion on what our budget amount's going to be for this party, and I don't know how we go about that, but...
She's trying to come up with a figure on food.
Cassie is?
Casey.
Casey?
It's Casey.
I know that, I know Casey.
You know Casey.
Yeah, all right. So Casey Miller's gonna be doing the...
She's kinda doing it all.
Doing the party for us, for Gary. So without her kinda giving us a recommendation, we're kind of at...
I texted her again before the meeting started, she hasn't gotten back to me, 'cause she's still trying to figure it out.
Okay.
She just barely kinda got a number of people.
Sean?
I don't think it's gonna be that many, five hundred, two thousand?
No, no.
On a Wednesday night?
Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Well, I think you still can wait for that number, you don't have to take official action on it, it'll be within our budget, so...
Okay.
So the money will be there, so the mayor, mayor probably is hoping that Casey would have some numbers, but since we get those, we can distribute those, but it'll be within the budget, so I'll keep taking official action.
Perfect.
So unlimited budget, I love that.
Twenty grand.
I have had parties like that.
We have a, we have a, we have a line item in our budget for those kinda things.
Oh, okay.
I don't know. Mark, do you have any idea how many attended Dan MacArthur's farewell? Guestimate?
Hundreds.
Oh, were there?
Around four hundred plus.
And he was only twenty years.
Maybe even six.
So double that.
I'm probably sending out a hundred and two hundred invitations, a hundred and fifty invitations, at least.
So you could easily figure three hundred?
Four hundred?
I don't know, there'll be more.
More?
Yes.
At least. Yeah, I would say you're gonna have over the course of two hours.
So there may be some cookies left over anyway, from the other, from the root beer float.
Cookies and root beer.
I think, you know what, why not plan for more? If you have more left, we can take this stuff to Switchpoint.
Yeah, yeah.
But the next one, he called, he wants a dollar now.
Well, he doesn't have that yet.
Okay. As recommended by this, our wonderful city attorney, we'll make that...
Yeah.
Within our budget.
I mean, anybody can come and...
Within our sundries budget.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that? Make sure you're all there.
Well, we'll be in our wonderful budget retreat all day.
That is the seventh, eighth.
The eighth.
The eighth, or what's that?
Four to six.
And then we have our budget retreat.
That whole day.
Oh, yeah, what's she gonna make a party out of?
Shoot, you are missing out.
Okay, is there any other council member reports that we need to do before we close the meeting?
Yeah, I have one thing that was brought up before the meeting, so apparently...
I got it. I forgot. There is a nonprofit in town called Memory Matters. They, mm-hmm, they are a nonprofit for Alzheimer's, and somebody's been subsidizing their rent, and no longer is going to do that, so they're gonna have to shut their doors, unless any of you know any philanthropists that would like to subsidize their rent by five hundred dollars a month.
This wasn't the group that was here at work meeting?
See, and mentioning that, that group, I'm much more familiar with, and that was something to me, I would rather see us support that. That's just the way I am, and I wish I knew more about Memory Matters, but I don't. But the other one looks like a long-term quality effort to help with that, so...
So if we decide that we're going to purchase and donate any money, we want it to go to that group, the one before. But if you have any rich friends, let them know. So I did my part.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
I would just add here that the dinosaur museum is thriving, is continuing to grow, that this is the highest December ever, and tenants of the food shop are doing well, and they're looking to project a building across the street, on both sides, and we'll get it all in detail, it's very positive, the management, that board of directors, how they're operating is very good.
Awesome. Okay, if there's nothing else, then I just need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Done, non-debatable. Thank you.
We vote?